Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. Today is Thursday, December the 12th. I am Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. And on behalf of all of my colleagues here on council, we just want to thank everyone who has joined us in council chambers and also a thank you to those of you who are on Zoom. Just as a quick note for anyone who would like to give public comment. If you're virtual, there is a Google Form signup link in our chat. If you are in council chambers and you haven't signed up for public comment yet, you still may do so. Public comment will take place after non-legislative business. At this time, we'll have our opening prayer by Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
Amen. And now we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to ask for our clerk to call the roll.
Councilman White.
Present.
Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver. Thank you. Councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Fields.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field.
Present.
Councilwoman Cabrera. Councilman Mills. Councilman Spadola.
Present.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Present.
President Congo.
Here.
Ten present and three absent.
Thank you. Now we will have the reading of the minutes from our previous meeting.
December 5th, 2024, City Council met on regular session with remote participation above date at 6:33 PM. President Ernest M. Congo II presiding. The opening prayer was done by Akira Granado, Deputy City Clerk.
I move that the minutes be received as written.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. And now we will have our committee reports.
December 2nd, 2024, present members of Council of City of Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we your Community Development and Urban Planning Committee met by anchor location and remote participation to who was referred substitute number one to ordinance number 24054 in title. An ordinance to amend chapter five of the city code to require funeral service providers to provide appropriate information sheet to personal representatives of a descendant. Have given this ordinance careful study and recommend counsel on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present. Councilwoman Cabrera, Councilman Field, Councilwoman Darby, Councilwoman Fields, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilman Spadola, Councilman White, and President Congo.
I move the committee report to be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
December 2nd, 2024, ladies and gentlemen, we your Community Development and Urban Planning Committee met by anchor location and remote participation to who was referred ordinance number 24055 in title. An ordinance to amend chapter three of the city code to increase the fine for dog owners whose dog bites someone while off leash. Have given this ordinance careful study and recommend counsel on it accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present. Councilwoman Cabrera, Councilman Field, Councilwoman Darby, Councilwoman Fields, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilman Spadola, Councilman White, and President Congo.
I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And now we will have our city treasures report.
December 12th, 2024. Total investment, $523,68,810.31. Total cash on hand, $13,129,245.61. Grand total, $536,198,055.92. Submitted by Dwayne Sims, City Treasurer.
I move the treasures report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, the treasures report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I will accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second to accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we will have our recognition resolutions. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask Corporal Avery Stewart to meet me at the podium.
Councilmember McCord, would you like any of his supporters to also come or just him?
Yes, and all those who actually work with him, partners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You didn't have anyone else who was coming up with you? Thank you. So this recognition is actually from myself, but I'm certain that Corporal Stewart has actually worked with many other council people as well. Also, I just wanted to make certain that you're aware that last year, this is something that he participated in as also. It's just that I didn't get enough chance, enough time to actually make certain that we recognized you. Whereas is the sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Councilmember Yolanda McCoy would like to honor Corporal Avery Stewart as such person who merits special distinction for his dedicated service to his community in the city of Wilmington. Whereas even before graduating the 99th Wilmington Police Academy in 2019, Corporal Stewart had a passion for public service. He began his career in law enforcement with a vow to never lose sight of ways to give back to the people in his community. And whereas while on duty in Sector 3, that's my sector. On the west side of Wilmington, Corporal Stewart has, I'm sorry, was able to work closely with Ms. Cindy Gibbs and her husband, residents who hold an annual Christmas toy drive. Witnessing the positive effects she was making in those families' lives and the smiles on children's faces inspire Corporal Stewart. He decided to add to their holiday joy with a Thanksgiving giveaway. Whereas since the annual turkey drive started in 2021, Corporal Stewart has found support among his colleagues, including Wilmington Police Department Chief Alfredo Campos. His work also gained attention from a variety of community stakeholders, including Melissa Kenny of the Kenny Foundation, corporate partners, shelter programs, transitional housing programs, and others with a desire to make a difference. This initiative demonstrates the power of teamwork and dedication. Together, his group has distributed 100 to 2, sorry, 150 to 200 turkey baskets to families in need. Following the distribution, he and the volunteers participate in a walk to provide bag lunches to homeless individuals in the area. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this council is pleased to commend Corporal Avery Stewart and his team for their community service and wish them well in future endeavors. I'm sorry, Corporal Stewart, do you have a few words?
Good evening, council members. Thanks for the invite. First off, I would like to thank the City of Wilmington, the council members here tonight, the community that I serve daily as a patrol officer. I also would like to thank the Kenny Foundation, Ms. Melissa Kenny and Rachel Painter, who are true ambassadors of the community every day and working in a partnership with me in the Wilmington Police Department. I would also like to thank my supervision at my job, all the leadership, internal leadership at the Wilmington Police Department, and the colleagues that I work side by side with every day in the community. I would also like to thank all of the council members, as I stated before, who represent our city. I would like to give a special thanks to Ms. Yolanda McCoy, our Councilwoman for the 6th District, who has also been a community ambassador before being elected in 2016. Ms. McCoy has continued to organize and cultivate our community in many different ways, whether it's working side by side with the community and her staff to advocate for projects, policies, and practices that make the community stronger every day. Thanks again, and I appreciate it.
Councilmember Harley.
Yes, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember McCoy for recognizing Corporal Avery Stewart. I also want to thank him as well as his colleagues for reaching out during the Thanksgiving season for these last couple years. What you have done and what you and your colleagues have done have made an impact. And every time I get that email, I'm like, oops, I always forget until you send that email. And we really do appreciate it, those of us that receive that email, because there's always a few more people that could use, you know, these turkeys and, you know, what you have to offer. So I just wanted to say thank you, and what you're doing is making a difference. And thank you, Councilmember McCoy, for recognizing that tonight.
I just wanted to say, before you stepped away, Corporal Stewart, is the fact that because you reach out to council, I am a council member who does not actually have a high rise in my area. So that's a lot of times the people in my district may not receive those turkey baskets and things of that nature. And so because of the fact that not only you, but also the firefighters, the public safety departments have been reaching out to me to make certain that the people in my district and my areas, the areas that may not have a high rise, get those baskets. It is truly appreciated. So we just wanted, I wanted to make certain we thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Smith, Tremaine Smith, can you come up?
Do you have any family members that can come up with you? Any team members?
Good evening, everyone. It is my delight to provide this young man with a resolution. I'm gonna let him tell the story, but I can remember him running up and down the hallways at West Center City, and then he can go in, go in from there. But I'm just happy to see that he has made strides in his youth and as a young man. So this resolution was, was my idea. So sponsor Councilwoman Brigida Fields. Whereas it is the sense of Wilmington Council to honor individuals and organizations that exemplify outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement, Councilmember Brigida A. Fields wishes to recognize Mr. Tremaine Smith as one each individual. And whereas Tremaine Smith is the Executive Director of Born for Brothers, a nonprofit organization dedicated to addressing youth disparities and providing mentorship to at-risk youth. Born for Brothers is a product of Tremaine's passion for giving back to his community. The organization provides vital resources and support to underserved population locally. And whereas Born for Brothers was established in 2017 and has become a vital force offering guidance, support, and advocacy for youth, Tremaine's unwavering commitment to empowering the next generation is reflected in his leadership and the organization's impact initiative. And whereas Mr. Smith is a proud native of the community he serves and is deeply dedicated to uplifting the neighborhood, his firsthand understanding of the challenges faced by local youth has been his motivation to create opportunities and to support systems that fosters success. Under Tremaine's direction, Born for Brothers has positively impacted over 1,000 individuals, particularly those initiatives like back-to-school drives and feeding the homeless. And whereas a core aspect of Born for Brothers' mission is its mentorship program, which operates in 16 schools, this program has measurable success in reducing student disciplinary actions, improving school attendance, and enhancing academic performance, underscoring the positive influence of mentorship in shaking, shaping young lives. And whereas Tremaine also assists youth in juvenile justice settings with receiving fair treatment and opportunities for positive life outcomes, we commend his dedication, commitment, and service to serving our community. Now therefore be resolved by the city, by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this council is pleased to recognize Mr. Tremaine Smith, Executive Director of Born for Brothers, for his contribution to the youth throughout the city of Wilmington. Job well done.
Appreciate that. Standing over here trying to just keep it together. Just elated, excited, emotional. I get to share this experience with my grandmother who's here with us today. My grandmother who raised me and my three siblings. And of course, it comes with emotion, comes with all the excitement with it. Appreciate you for having me here. Such an honor. Appreciate you, Councilwoman Brigida Fields, councilwomen, men, and everybody that's in this room. So I want to first and foremost thank God, who swept me off my feet and helped me and instilled value and respect and honor within myself. Without this guidance, I wouldn't be here standing today. I extend a heartfelt gratitude to my family and friends who's here today. Even when you may have thought I was a little courageous. You never judged me. Instead, you stood by my side. And through these challenges and every victory and every setback, I am profoundly grateful for each and one of you guys. To my community, I thank you for giving me multiple chances, for getting it right, to allowing me to grow, evolve, and align myself as a trusted leader throughout Delaware landscape. Your support and patience has been a driving force to my journey. I want to also, I also want to say thank you to our constituents, our partners, our entrepreneurs, and our other advocates. Thank you for demonstrating the power of relentlessness and dedication. Your commitment to progress and positive change has been both inspiring and motivating. I want to give a special shout out to our own, our 5th District City Councilwoman Brigida Fields, whose unwavering support for my dreams and vision to make a difference in this world has meant more than words can express. For years of you having my back and for never leaving me aside, I'm grateful for that. I know your mother alongside of our Hicks, our Hicks community family, where I grew up at, is looking to you with pride and joy. Great job for moving our community forward and always knowing that you have a friend. You have a partner and a little brother that you can count on. For my team at Born for Brothers, we are a mentoring and youth advocate firm dedicated to making lasting impact on the lives of young people. Our work extends beyond the classroom and committed the time to supporting students both in the schools and in the community. Our mission is to instill value, education, social justice, and opportunity for every student we serve. The dedication has allowed us to support nearly 300 students in earning their high school diplomas. A milestone symbolizes hard work, perseverance, and potential. As the saying goes, problems can become opportunity when the right people come together. This sentiment is the heart of everything that we do. Our team unwavering success is the proof of the power of collective efforts and shared purpose. Research clearly shows that if with teens have caring adults in their lives, they are less likely to engage in risky behaviors and more focused on their academics. According to studies, students that participate in mentor programs experience significant benefit. 60% of more, 60% of those youth are more likely to have better grades. 72% are less likely to skip school. 81% are most likely to participate in some type of extracurricular project. Mentoring is a vital resource in our community, and we know it. Resources that is needed more than ever across our state and country. It plays a crucial role in helping youth navigate challenging life transitions, such as coping skills in stressful situations at home and preparing for adults. Through mentorship, we could continue to guide young people towards a brighter future and a stronger community. With your help and collaboration, we could do, we could and will always do more. As I close, I want to leave you with this. Mentoring is more than just guidance. It's an act of love, patience, and belief in the potential of others. When we choose to be a mentor, we choose to uplift, we choose to inspire, walk alongside young people as they navigate life challenges. Every conversation, every moment of encouragement, and every shared lesson plant seeds of greatness that can grow for a lifetime. Mentoring is the, is the bridge between doubt and confidence, between uncertainty and direction, between potential and success. It is a powerful tool that transforms not just the lives of young people, but the communities in which we live. Let's continue to mentor, support, and believe in the next generation because our future depends on it. Thank you.
Hey Tremaine, I forgot to tell you you had a time, you had a time limit. You know, I would hate, I would, I would hate to hear your acceptance speech if you got a Grammy. Well, man, thank you so much for everything you do. You know, we go, we go back a long ways, and I know that everything you do, everything your team does is from the heart. your team does is from the heart. It's not about the status, it's not about the money, it's just that you wanted to make a change, and you have. So, keep doing what you're doing, man, and not you, but just your team, and we will always be here to support you. Thank you, brother.
Appreciate you.
Councilmember Harley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask Anaya to please come at this time, and anyone else that she would like to bring with her. Anaya? And any other friends and family members, please feel welcome to come and join her here at the podium. And while they are coming to the podium, I just want to say that tonight is a bittersweet night in so many ways for myself, but more sweet, I want to say, for some, and I would say for most, as it relates to Anaya especially, bitter that we are not going to have this stellar exemplary staff person with us any longer, but it's sweet that she's going to be able to move on to bigger and better as it relates to her career development. And that's always a good thing, to have the opportunity to develop personally and professionally. On behalf of the City of Wilmington, Delaware City Council, December the twelfth, this is on behalf of all the council members. Council President Ernest Trippie Congo II, Councilmember Vincent White, Councilmember Sine Darby, Councilmember Xanthia Oliver, Councilmember Michelle Harley, Councilmember Brigida Fields, Councilmember Yolanda McCoy, Councilmember Christopher Johnson, Councilmember Nathan Field, Councilmember Maria Cabrera, and Councilmember Albert Mills, Councilmember James Spadola, and Councilmember Letitia Bracy. Whereas it is the sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement, Anaya Harrison is one such individual. Whereas Anaya began her public service career with the Wilmington City Council in July 2023, initially as an urban policy fellow and later as a legislative and fiscal budget analyst. In these roles, her responsibilities included managing grant and scholarship funds, producing high-quality legislative research, assisting with policy analysis, and supporting the implementation of the 2022-2025 Wilmington City Council Strategic Plan. Anaya also contributed to key urban planning initiatives as a member of Wilmington's Electric Vehicle Working Group and a participant in the Community Development Block Grant Committee. Whereas in May 2023, Anaya earned her Bachelor of Arts in Public Policy and Political Science with minors in Spanish and Africana Studies from the University of Delaware. She also holds a Master of Arts in December of 2024. She successfully defended her thesis, which examined the social and cultural implications of the 2023 Lathania wildfires, excuse me. Whereas in her time working for the Wilmington City Council, Anaya has demonstrated professionalism, taken initiative, and made lasting contributions to supporting the goals and priorities of this legislative body. Anaya will be embarking on a new chapter in her professional journey as a congressional aide to Pennsylvania's Third District Congressman Dwight Evans. We commend her for her service and wish her continued success in her future endeavors. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington, that this council is pleased to recognize Anaya Harrison for her service to the Wilmington City Council. And we want to say to you, Anaya, job well done.
Hello, everyone. I wasn't too prepared to speak tonight, so I'll keep it very short. I want to give a very, very sincere thank you to all the staff of the council, especially to Dr. Kendra and to Marshall. Thank you for believing in me, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to be, you know, a part of the wonderful work we do here. It really has been an honor of my lifetime, so thank you very much. Thank you to all the members of the council. Thank you to Council President, and I hope you all have a great evening and happy holidays. I would be remiss not to mention my parents and my sister for being here at this time. Thank you so much, and I love you all dearly.
Anaya, I'm not sure what you did to Marshall. I think she is the most broken-hearted person in this room right now. She is devastated that you're not going to be with us next session. But congratulations, she, you know, of course, we all wish you well. But you, I don't know if you have a sister or a brother, a family member, somebody who can come in and help us out who has your genes, because you, you put, you put something on Marshall, because I've never seen her as excited about a potential staff member. So, again, job well done. Our Councilmember Bracy.
Good Chief of Staff, join us at the podium, please.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Cabrera.
So, as some of you may know, our Chief of Staff is winding down her tenure with us and moving on to Newcastle County to do some awesome work and stay in partnership with us here at the city. So, sponsors, Council President Trippie Congo, and all council members, Vincent White, Sine Darby, Xanthia Oliver, Michelle Harley, Brigida Fields, Yolanda McCoy, Christopher Johnson, Nathan Field, Maria Cabrera, Albert Mills, James Spadola, and Letitia Bracy. Whereas it is a sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement, Mona A. Perique Exwire, Chief of Staff to the one hundred and eighth Session of the Council of the City of Wilmington, is one such individual. And whereas on October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, Mona was appointed Chief of Staff and has served with distinction throughout her tenure. Her innovative perspectives and authenticity have been integral to promoting internal cohesion and fostering productive relationships with a range of external stakeholders. And whereas Mona holds a Bachelor of Arts from the University of Delaware and a Juris Doctor from the Delaware Law School, her professional experiences spanned the public, private, and nonprofit sectors. Mona began her career as a law clerk in Newcastle County Court of Common Pleas and later the United States Bankruptcy Court for the District of Delaware. And whereas in addition to her work as an attorney, Mona has made significant contributions to Wilmington's entrepreneurial community as the Managing Director of Started Up Delaware Inc. and as the Director of Business Development and Marketing for Delaware Innovation Space. She has also supported the professional development of numerous aspiring legal and business professionals at the Delaware Law School, University of Delaware's Horne Entrepreneurship Center, and the National Science Foundation's Innovation Corps at Princeton University. Mona has participated in a gubernatorial council and working group, Newcastle County Executive Matt Myers Transition Team, and the Delaware Business Roundtable. She has been recognized as a top honoree for the 2014 Delaware Business Times Forty Under Forty Innovators and Achievers, as well as the 2015 Technically Delaware Community Organizer of the Year. And whereas Mona has demonstrated exemplary, exemplary leadership even in challenging times, she has brought to bear a wealth of knowledge and array of, inner array of subjects, indomitable professionalism, and a singular spirit of compassion to her work. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington, this council commends Mona for her diligent service and wishes her much success as she begins a new chapter with Newcastle County. We're going to miss you.
Was not expecting this. Thank you to everyone serving as your Chief of Staff has really been the honor of a lifetime. I'll never forget when I saw the post on Councilman Spadola's LinkedIn page, and I called him, and he said, "If you're serious, let's talk." And then after that, it was just a series of conversations and meetings and getting to know the staff and just being embraced by all of you, all our conversations, no matter what hour of the day or night. You know, I'm always here, I always will still be here, and I'm really excited to continue doing more good work for Delaware now at the county. You know, I live in Wilmington, I, it is a place that I love, and I just want to see it get better and better. And I know I'm proud of what, the work that was done in this session, and I'm really excited to see what you all come up with next session. And Council President, I just also want to say thank you so much for your leadership, for always being very fair and kind and compassionate as a leader, as a mentor and as a friend. Marshall, thank you for everything. You have taught me so much, and I don't think I would be able to take on any next step or opportunity without your guidance and your leadership. And to all the staff, you know, I love you guys so much, and you can still call me anytime. Thank you, everyone.
Councilmember Spadola.
Thank you, Council President. Mona, it's been, it's been an honor to have you with us. When, when we lost Mr. Walker, I think all of us were thinking, how the heck could we ever find someone of a similar caliber that could herd cats like he did? And then when you reached out to me, I was like, sweet Jesus, we might have, we might have found the one. So, you know, we've been lucky to have you, looking forward to seeing what you do with the county. Don't lose our numbers, okay? And Council President, I'm willing to waive my finder's fee for the next Chief of Staff just for you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yes, I just want to say congratulations, and I want to say I appreciate you taking my phone calls, and I start rambling before you even know what I'm talking. He said, "Slow down Brigida," or "Slow down Councilwoman." So what are you saying? So, I appreciate you understanding, understanding when I called you, you knew what I was trying to get to, but you just wanted me to slow down, and it takes a strong person to, you know, like he said, herd all of us together and understand each one, each one of ours personalities and be able to deal with others differently. So, again, congratulations, and you're going to be missed.
Councilmember Cabrera, then Councilmember Harley.
Thank you. Mona, you've been more than a Chief of Staff. I feel like you've been a sister, and ditto on what Councilmember Fields said, no matter the time or the hour and the rambling, you always manage to have us take a deep breath, focus, everything's going to be okay, and to do things step by step. And it takes a strong person to deal with all the strong personalities that we have here on City Council, because to be an elected leader, you know, takes a certain kind of person, a certain personality, and that's who we are, and we're not the easiest. But you definitely helped this work cohesively come together, even during our disagreements. We found a way, and a lot of that was because of your guidance and helping us to see all sides of the issue and to take a deep breath as we move forward. So, I am looking forward to working with you, because I know that your heart is in Wilmington, and you will continue to do for our city in your new role. So I'm sure that there will be collaborations, and then maybe now we could actually hang out a little bit since we're not in that professional relationship, we can develop our personal relationship. Thank you, God bless you, and I know you'll do a great job.
Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So first of all, Mona, I want to say congratulations to you. I'm very happy that you were able to have an opportunity, again, as Anaya, to be able to move on, to advance your career. I was sitting here just thinking about when you submitted your resume, myself and Marshall. We were going over the resumes and looking at the different qualifications of all the different individuals that had submitted resumes, and I was actually very surprised once you got hired, all the people that you knew. I had no idea that you knew Councilmembers Spadola, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Bracy. I didn't know you knew all these different individuals just on council, not to mention the people you know in the city and the county and the state. So, I said all that to say that I feel as though we did get a stellar person in you, and as we know, we live in a small city and a small state, and having different relationships with different people on different levels, I think you being that person, having those relationships, it benefited us. And as Councilmember Spadola said, you know, Daniel Walker was a hard act to follow, but you stepped in those shoes, and I commend you for just, you know, being willing to take on the fight. You came in, in a very unusual one oh eighth session. This was very unusual, very different, and I commend you and congratulate you for being able to handle all the different personalities, all the different innuendos of how this council actually was working, which was very different from the previous councils. So, I commend you for that, and because you were able to experience being in a council like this, I know that you're going to do very well in your next position. And again, thank you and congratulations.
Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mona, I'm listening to my colleagues, and I think I owe you some phone calls, because for all of the conversation, all of this, I'm like, I think I talked to you a few times, so you will probably still get a few calls from me even after you've left. I just want to also-
Because you were well behaved.
I just would like to also say that, you know, it looks like we're doing a pretty good job when it comes to finding talent, because they have been taking our Chief of Staff left and right. So, I just, I want to wish you well. I know we'll still keep in contact. I'm okay with the, what's it, it's county exec-elect. Okay, he took our, he took you by. You know, we're going to make certain that we, we smooth things over and that we have a great relationship with county. But I do wish you well. This is going to be a great opportunity. I look forward to what, what will happen with the city when we have a stronger relationship. So, I can't wait to see what you're able to do there.
And Mona, I would also like to just echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Unlike some of my colleagues, we didn't know each other, but you came highly recommended from some, some people who I trust, so I said, you know, I'm going to sit down and talk to, and I don't really go by resumes, I just kind of go by the field that I get, and we just instantly connected. You know, we're, we're more than coworkers, we're friends, and with Marcus, when I was reaching out to Marcus, Marcus Henry, the Newcastle County Exec-elect, I was, I was trying to decide if I'm going to be selfish and give you a bad recommendation so he wouldn't hire you. And I was like, you know, I can't be selfish. So, you know, I gave, of course, I gave you rave reviews, and I'm, you know, I'm sad, but I'm really happy for you, and I know that our relationship is going to continue. I know, like other council members said, you're going to strengthen our relationship with the county. So we're still going to win, but congratulations for, for, you know, job well done with us, and I know you're going to do a great job with the county. Thank you. As far as sympathy resolutions, we have a sympathy resolution from Councilmember Spadola for Addie Mae Cole, and sympathy resolutions for, to be added to the results from Councilmember Cabrera, sympathy resolutions for Javier Morales, Jose Miguel Prado, and from Councilmember Fields, a sympathy resolution for Helen P. Walker, and from Councilmember Harley, a sympathy resolution for Veronica Lemon. And as, as many of you who are with us virtually or in council chambers, this is a very sad evening for us, because there are so many council members, so many staff, some are moving on and some are retiring, and this is a lady who does not like recognition at all, so we did not prepare a resolution at her wishes, but I cannot let this meeting go without just acknowledging Mary Bell, because she has been our- been our city clerk for 28 years now. And I'm sorry, Marty, but I had to do it. I mean, you've been more than a city clerk. You have been a friend, you've been an ear, you have been an advocate for me, and you have been someone who just has given me great advice over my last almost 16 years now here on council. So, I know you don't like to be recognized, but I just could not let this meeting go without acknowledging you and the work that you've done for City Council. I think you probably have been in more meetings than all of us combined. I think we said it was around 600 and something meetings that you've been a part of. That's just council meetings, not including the committee meetings. But you are gonna be greatly, greatly missed. I know you're still gonna be just a phone call away. And I know, again, I know you didn't want this, but there were a few people in the audience that wanted to come up and say a few things. So, we're gonna ask your daughter and your son to come out. And your grandchildren.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, I'm gonna-
You guys can come over here to the left, right to the left. All right, whenever you're ready.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jessica. I am gonna cry. I'm so proud of my mom. She's worked so hard for so many years. And I'm proud to say you were the first woman and first Latina to do this. She makes us so proud. You inspire me. You always are there for us and I'm so happy to have you as my mother. I don't know what else to say. I'm just so happy for you and I'm so proud of you and I love you so much.
I love you. Thank you.
I don't know if nobody knows me here, but my name's Luigi, I'm her son. So, I just want to tell you, you know, I'm happy for you and thank you for everything you've done the last 28 years for this place. A very big accomplishment for what you've done for the city, being the first Latin woman to do what you do and hold your position as long as you have. So, in that, I'm proud of you, all right?
Thank you.
I think the little one wants to say something. Give her the mic.
Every time I'm with her, I feel so comfortable.
Thank you, baby. Love you.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes, I'd be remiss if I didn't say anything. Maribel, to me, is more than a history maker. This wonderful woman who's endured 28 years working in the City Council office in her previous roles and in the current roles. You are an Manas, you're my sister. We've just grew up through the years together. You and Maria, I mean, listen, you guys worked hard, you deserve to enjoy a retirement. But the city has lost the two Manas, the two sisters that have been with us for decades that have given so much public service. And your advice has always been sound and calm. You brought such a sense of balance and, you know, I love you and I'm happy for you and I know that you will spend your time doing great things still, as you always have, very quietly and very humbly. I know you don't like recognitions and everything that you do, you do behind the scenes, but just know that nothing went unnoticed throughout the years, throughout the decades of service. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Te quiero mucho.
Councilmember Harley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Marybel, there is so much that we all could say about you. Councilmember Cabrera, she pretty much wrapped it all up. But I want to, first of all, congratulate you on your retirement. The City of Wilmington, City Council, we are definitely losing a great worker. I just admire your integrity. I admire your character. I admire the fact that, you know, you came to work, you did your job, you was about business, five days a week, eight hours a day, and is to be commended. I wish that you will take it all in, these 28 years, I think it is, 28 years, take it all in and enjoy this time off. I enjoy the comments from your family. It just goes to show you know who you are at work and who you are at home. So, congratulations on your retirement. It has been my utmost pleasure knowing you, working with you. And like I said, Councilmember Cabrera pretty much pointed out all your wonderful qualities, humble, business, professional, accurate, anything that you shared, I always knew that I didn't have to ask nobody else. After talking to you, I knew it was a wrap. So, again, congratulations on your retirement and enjoy your family.
Thank you so much.
All right. Sorry, Marty.
That's okay. Can I say something?
Oh, of course.
I definitely wasn't expecting to speak either and I definitely wasn't expecting my children to be here, my grandchildren. So, yes, I am humbled and honored to be here and hear the kind words that you all have for me. I'm thankful to the City Council. But I do have to make one correction because the clerk in me will not allow that tonight to go by. While I've been with the City of Wilmington 28 years, I've only been the clerk since 2000. So, 20 years as a clerk of council. But yes, I just want to thank council for the opportunities offered to me to learn and grow professionally, for allowing me to be part of the council team for 28 years and being able to build all the working relationship with so many wonderful city employees, many who go unrecognized and work very hard for the City of Wilmington. But more specifically, I've been, had the pleasure of working with such wonderful staff of council who I would truly, truly miss. The Marshalls, the Akira, the Tracy's, Marybel. Or Michelle saying that, "Let's huddle." Akira, "Did you see that email?" I cannot miss saying, Mona, who is so, although she's the newest member on our team, "I'm gonna also miss you, your kind heart, kind heart and..." "Oh, sure, don't worry about it, of course." Do you? So, she's very laid back, very professional. Mayor Baker, former Mayor Baker, he is the only one who I've allowed, as you know, I have adult childrens and grandchildren who still call me kiddo every time he comes into the office. So, I'm gonna miss everyone. I'm only a phone call away, but I wanted to wish members of council, the staff and the City of Wilmington as a whole, much success in this transition into the new session and the coming years. So, thank you so much for your kind words. Thank you so much.
Mr. President. I just want to say thank you for the Bustelo curigs that she also brought into the office. Para mi especial.
You're welcome.
At this time, we are going to move to public comment. Just as a friendly reminder, for anyone who is virtual, there is a Google form signup link. As you come up to the podium, please remember to introduce yourself. You have a three-minute time limit. Okay, all right, thank you. We are going to just take care of some business. Because it's almost 7:30, we do need a motion to extend public comment past 7:30.
Move second.
It's been moved in second to extend public comment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Thank you. So, again, as you're called up, please remember to introduce yourself. Please watch your step as you get to the podium. And once you have 30 seconds left, I will give you a friendly reminder to wrap up your comments. First, we have Deacon Earl E. Tate.
My name is Deacon Earl E. Tate. Don't be too late or you lose your pair of roller skates. And I'm here, and I'm here to present to y'all, this is the last month of the year and this month is going by so fast, but we are losing a lot of people. We are losing a lot of our friends, a lot of our relatives and everything. Why? Because people don't take their time in driving, driving, they drive like a bat out of hell. Where are you going to in such a hurry? You don't have to be there in that much of a hurry. Take your time and slow down, slow down and take time to live, take time to live and take time to enjoy life because the life is not given to you to take away. Life is given to us to live and to enjoy and to admire each other. So, that's the reason why. We got to slow down and take our time. And in this year that is coming up, we better fasten our safety belts and everything and batten down the hatches because this year is gonna be, it's gonna be a rough year. But it's no rougher than you make it for yourself. Because we, we the people, not only of Wilmington, not only of Delaware, but of the United States, we gotta show them in politics, in the government and everything, that we have a voice and we're gonna use it to speak up for our rights, for our rights because we have the right to live and to let live. So, we got, so we got, so we got to do the things that is right for us. Because if we don't, we only hurting ourselves as well as others. So, people, learn how to live and learn how to let live, enjoy and enjoy life because life is more than, more than just breathing. Life is worth living. And I want to say to all of y'all, have a beautiful holiday, a lovely Christmas, and may your New Year's come in full of blessings upon blessings for all of y'all. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. We do have some online public comment, so we're going to just go back and forth out of fairness. So, online, we're gonna have Bayard Marin, WITN, if Bayard Marin is still with us.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Bayard Marin, president of the Quaker Hill Historic Preservation Foundation and a board member of the Neighborhood Association and have had my office in Quaker Hill for 41 years. I just wanted to thank Brigida Fields for her service on the City Council and in particular, her lifelong interest in Quaker Hill and the area surrounding Quaker Hill. She's always been there to support us, not only for our history and architecture, but also in trying and perhaps even more importantly, in trying to keep the community safe and healthy. So, I just wanted to thank her and let it be known that we very much appreciate everything she's done.
Okay, thank you. Next, in council chambers, we have Yvette Tucker. Please remember to introduce yourself when you get to the podium. Please watch your step.
Good evening. My name is Yvette Tucker. I really wasn't supposed to be here talking, but this is my fault because I gave the people the wrong date, so I have to talk. But anyway, I'm here to talk about the ordinance for the fines for the dogs. About two years ago, I had a cousin, Kathy Church. She was, got off the city bus on the east side and as soon as she stepped off the bus, she was attacked by this bully dog. It was cold and thank God she had a long coat on because when the dog jumped on her back, she fell, but it got her legs. I don't know how many times it bit her. She already had an issue with her legs because I think she was going through something with veins popping out her legs or whatever. But she went to the doctor, well, she was in the hospital for like three, four days. They released her from the hospital. She went home. About a week later, her son was getting dressed to take her to the hospital and we went up in the bathroom, she was expired. So, all them dog bites really messed her up. So, I'm with finding these people that don't have a dog on the leash. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Next, virtually, we have Josh Schoenberg.
Council President Congo and honorable members of City Council, my name is Josh Schoenberg and I'm a third-generation funeral director serving this community. I speak this evening about the ordinance to require funeral providers to provide a probate information sheet to families we serve. I want to be clear that I do not, nor do I know any funeral directors who oppose the spirit in which this information sheet is being proposed. As a funeral director, I work with families every day and provide them extensive information on what to do in the wake of a death and what legal steps are necessary. Most funeral directors I know provide similar information to the families we serve. The idea of providing information to families is a good one. The objection I have to this proposed ordinance lies in the details. First, the proposed information sheet only exists in draft form and has not been reviewed by the funeral homes. How can an ordinance require funeral homes, under penalty of civil fine for noncompliance, provide a document that does not exist yet? Moreover, the funeral homes have an interest in ensuring that the information they are being mandated to provide is accurate and as such, the process of drafting the information sheet should be transparent with opportunity for comment before the mandate is imposed. The Register of Wills and Recorder of Deeds are both county offices and also have a substantial interest in ensuring that the information provided is accurate. These are interested parties who I am concerned are not being involved. It is my understanding that this probate information sheet, if and when finalized, will be available on the City Wilmington website. So, I struggle to reconcile why funeral providers are being threatened with a civil fine if they do not provide a document which can be obtained by anyone visiting the city website. There are also serious questions about which funeral homes for which the mandate will apply. Does it apply to funeral homes where the business is domiciled in the City of Wilmington? Or funeral homes who serve a decedent who is a city resident regardless of where the funeral home is located? Or funeral homes serving deceased city property owners regardless of where they live or the funeral home they're using is located? The ordinance uses language "individuals buried locally," but what does that mean? The language used in this ordinance is incredibly vague and unclear in its application. There are too many situations to list, all of which would cause confusion as to who and what situations this ordinance applies. Also problematic is the confirmation of receipt of the probate information sheet by the decedent's families. Are the funeral homes expected to have families sign an acknowledgment of receipt of the probate information for funeral homes to retain? What if a family refuses to sign the acknowledgment and the funeral home is fined for noncompliance?
You have 30 seconds.
Additional concerns are regarding the personal representative which conflicts with state law. Again, I know no funeral directors who oppose this ordinance. The objective comes from threatening civil penalty for noncompliance and the unclear nature. I would advise tabling this ordinance until clarity can be provided for all parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, in council chambers, we have Agnes Sprurow. Next, in council chambers, we have Agnes Spruill. Thank you for joining us, and please remember to introduce yourself, and please be careful once you get to the podium. I will give you a 30-second reminder.
Good evening. My name is Agnes Spruill, and, uh, I live in, uh, Councilwoman Fields District. And I just wanted to very briefly, uh, thank her for her service to the district, to the community. Uh, I'm a relative newcomer. My husband and I have been living in Wilmington for less than three years, but we have chosen this as our home for the future. And, uh, I look forward to having Councilwoman Fields return to us at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, online, we have India Colon Diaz. Oh, okay, you may come forward, Ms. Diaz. Please remember to introduce yourself, and please be careful once you get to the podium.
Hello, my name is India Colon Diaz. Thank you, Council President, and everyone that's here today. I actually would be remiss if I didn't show up today to make an acknowledgement. Once I was made aware that it is the last time that Councilwoman Fields would be here as our representative in the 5th District, I had to simply come and speak. I had a great conversation today with probably 10 to 12 individuals from either grassroots or just community individuals. I will say this on behalf of someone who's lived in the city, and though I have a couple houses in the city, and I also have a house in Kent County, the city of Wilmington is my home, so I have to simply say that what I have learned from my council members at large and Councilman Fields, first and foremost, has been that it is not our responsibility to point the fingers at our council members, and that's just all the way around. What I've learned from them, and I will truly say this, and I've never seen this in my entire existence of living in the city of Wilmington, these last four years of living there, our residents, the unspoken residents, the ones that don't get out or understand or know, they no longer point the fingers. They actually are the ones that have been educated by our council members. Councilman Fields has truly been instrumental in shaping how the 5th District responds to what the job of a councilperson was. And that's really tough as a resident, because we seem to think that you guys can do everything for us. But if a light post is out, or something's not moving within our resident area, it's our job to make those phone calls, and it's your job to hold our city accountable. We've learned that through Councilman Fields. She has truly focused on the unseen. So I will simply say this, I'd like to simply make a roll call for the individuals who would not show up at city council, because they're the unseen. So for the unseen citizens, and the free citizens, the homeless people whose numbers have decreased in the 5th District over these last four years because of the work you've done with them, knowing that they can give you nothing, but you have simply brought the resources to them because they are the unspoken citizens. Thank you on behalf of them. Thank you on behalf of the LGBTQ community and the city pride community, which is within her district, is the only LGBTQ plus program that exists in the city of Wilmington, started with 50 people and has gone to over 500 people, and over 132 youth transgender community who live within this district. They have nowhere to go, but in working and the support that you've given the city pride program, which is the only existing program in the city of Wilmington that offers outreach directly to these individuals, on behalf of them, thank you. And on behalf of the many youth kids of the Roberto Clemente Leagues, the West Center City Kids who can't vote, can't do anything, you have been the voice for them through the grassroots organizations that connected the bridge to keep them out of trouble and be able to do things that I continue to do for them, because of you and the councilwomen's at large that have always been present. Like Tremaine said, we have not been able to see this district move the way it's moved if you hadn't focused on the silent ones that aren't able to do anything like vote or anything like that. It didn't matter that they can bring you forward. It mattered that the district moved forward, and we want to thank you silently because of that.
Next, we have Eric Spruill. Thank you for joining us, and please remember to introduce yourself. Please watch your step.
My name is Eric Spruill. You just heard my wife, Agnes. I'm here to add to what my wife, Agnes, said about Councilwoman Brigida Fields. As my wife said, we've been here less than three years. We moved into Quaker Hills and found it to be, it has its promises, and it has its problems. And the first person that we reached out was Councilman Fields. And Councilman Fields has never failed to give her, to give us the attention that the situation warranted. I, for one, I'm sorry to see you go, and I wish you good fortune in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Quincy Watkins. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please remember to introduce yourself. Please watch your step.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Quincy Watkins. I'm owner and operator of Milk and Honey Coffee Houses and in the lovely, uh, district of our Councilwoman Harley. And also, I am a pastor of the neighbor church that we have are building in the lovely 6th District of our Councilwoman Yolanda. Well, this is, this is my first, first meeting here. I came here for not complaint, but to celebrate. And this, this, my visit, I'm not, I'm not famous, but I'm very, very busy. And it came in a great sacrifice, but I'm glad I did. I, I, I know this is the reason why. I just want to celebrate the council people. The council, well, each of you have been very, very instrumental. Council President, we opened up the first one in Union League, you were there. You did great support. I'll never forget that. And to, I mean, to Councilwoman Brigida Fields, just immeasurable. You actually launched your, your campaign at Milk and Honey. I'll never forget that. And just all of the great, immeasurable things that you've done. And Councilwoman Harley, you're just amazing in all things. Thank you. You're, you're one of the reasons why I'm so on Market Street, honestly, with, with this, uh, with Milk and Honey. I believe that Milk and Honey, I believe Wilmington has great potential. Quickly, I mean, so much, I want to say this. When I came to the city, I just came as more as a pastor, I'm a shepherd that. But I do have extensive experience of, you know, went to war, and then went, I've worked at McKinsey, have done work with City of Philadelphia, with the Mayor Rendell, when he did all the, the Renaissance of that, that was part of that, I did some work in City of Chicago with Mayor Rendell and other kind of things. So I know City Government, I know strategy, things like that. And I believe Wilmington is on the cusp of something great, and I believe it's on the verge of a great Renaissance. And, and, um, I'm excited about what the possibilities could be with that. The pieces on the board put together, Councilwoman Brigida, I, this is, it's heartbreaking to see you go, but I know that you'll bounce back even better than John Travolta and all those things. And, uh, Council, of Councilman Johnson, I know he may be on here too. He, he launched his campaign at Milk and Honey. And Councilman, uh, James Padola, we, we did something when he was, when, when, when he was campaigning as well too. That's the goal of, the goal is for, for me humbly to play my part. I'm looking forward to it. Uh, I get a chance to, I also do, on, on the side, I do some executive coaching with some other, other particular of, of C-suite individuals. And I talk a lot about Wilmington, and even some of my classmates, awarding things like that. I say, you give it two to three years, this is gonna be one of the hottest cities on the east coast and that. So I believe, uh, you all are so accessible. Everything I've, I've asked, I mean, Councilman McCoy.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Harley, you know, Councilwoman Field, I mean, it's probably my one and only time, so I'm trying to get it all out. I'll pay a fine if I'm 10 minutes, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm about 20 seconds more. But, but I want you to know that you all are very accessible, and you, and, and you all get the job done. I don't like shucking and jiving. I don't like people to say something and do something different. I have not been disappointed this far, people, especially our council people keeping their words. And I want you to know from the bottom of my heart, I'm very grateful to each of you. And Councilwoman Bracy, I, how could I forget you? I really appreciate you and, and all you've done that, so. Oh, minus 19. I'm gonna send a donation. I'm sorry, Council.
We'll take that fine in form of a credit. Thank you. We'll take that fine in form of a credit at the, at the, at the.
Free sandwich.
This time, we're going to move to legislative business. Councilmember White.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 24054, Agenda 0487, an ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of the City Code to require funeral service providers to provide a probate information sheet to personal representatives of a descendant.
Mr. President, I have a substitute ordinance to present in lieu of that order.
Substitute number one to ordinance number 24054. Revision one to Agenda 0487. An ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of the City Code to require funeral service providers to provide a probate information sheet to personal representatives of a descendant.
Council, Councilmember White, please turn on your mic. There we go. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I move that that be known as an enacting clause of the substitute ordinance, and call for a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the enacting clause of the substitute ordinance, and call for a yea and nay vote on the question.
Mr. President, this is a amendment that would clarify, uh, local burrows as being those who are buried within the corporate limits of the city of Wilmington, no later than the date of the final disposition of the deceased.
You're making a formal motion.
Yes. Uh, you're, I move to make a formal amendment at such time, to add the, to add the underlying language to propose Section 5-162 as follows. Disclosure, a funeral service provider should provide the probate information sheet to the, to present the personal representative of the descendant, who is to be buried within the corporate limits of the city of Wilmington, no later than the date of the final disposition of the deceased.
So move.
Give us one moment, please.
Some motion on the floor.
It's been properly moved in second at the floor amendment, as before, council has stated on the question. Councilmember Spadola, did you have your hand raised?
So, to be clear, this is just amending that one line. We're not supposed to have that copy in front of us, right? You're just amending.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kerber.
I really believe that this is necessary legislation. We know what we have to go through and with the va- just with the vacant properties alone in the city of Wilmington, uh, the tangled titles, and then the demise of neighborhoods sometimes, because those properties sit vacant for a very long time. Um, I am going to express some concern on what the funeral directors did bring to our attention via email and the public comment that was made, because we're going to hold an industry accountable for certain things that may not even be within their control. One thing that stood out for me that was pointed out is suppose the family refuses to participate, to cooperate, and they're not able to produce, uh, what is being asked of them. I'm not gonna vote no, because this is my wonderful colleague, um, it's his last meeting, and I want to support his legislation. But I do feel that we have to look at some amendments, um, in terms of if we're gonna hold a certain industry or individuals accountable, we have to make sure that all the layers that, that are out there, um, that they have some control over that, which to me, it doesn't sound like they do. So I just want to, you know, bring that to the attention of council members as we move forward in the next session.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. President, I want to echo the same sentiments of my council member as it relates to this legislation. It is definitely a good idea, the spirit of it, um, is to educate, um, families about, um, probate.
Councilmember Harley, just want to make sure that we're speaking only to the amendment.
Okay, okay, that, so, yes, so, um, that's A, uh, clause A, right?
Yes.
Okay. So with the other piece of legislation, then we can speak on the question?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember White, before we have the roll call for the amendment, any other statement?
Speaking to the amendment, uh, Mr. President, no. On the bill, yes. On the ordinance, yes.
All right. This time, we'll have a, a vote on the, on the amendment only. This is only for the amendment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment adopted. Now, Councilmember White, we will go back to the legislation.
Let me find my place, Mr. President. I'll be right there with you. Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present for the call for the third and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Yes, we already, uh, at this time, we're just gonna entertain any, any comments from, from council members.
Mr. President.
Did you want to speak on the, on the, on the legislation?
I want to speak on the legislation.
Okay.
First, uh, colleagues and Council President, I want to, I want to, uh, counter the disingenuous comments of the public call, Mr. Josh Schoenberg. Uh, I had two meetings with him and representatives of the industry. For him to call in, say things that this is vague, uh, and presents a burden on the funeral home directors, I vehemently oppose that language. He mentioned that there was no clear indication. If you read the legislation of how this would be, would be delivered, it says in the legislation, "by hand." When he talked about the businesses, does this apply to the, what businesses would this apply to? Those that are domiciled in the city of Wilmington. When he mentioned local barriers, that was persons buried within the city limits. Now, I'm, I'm a little upset with this, because I had a comment with him, I had a conversation that lasts 30 minutes with him yesterday regarding the same subject matter that he presented today, and from my indications that you guys received some emails, counter to, to the legislation. He further mentioned that, um, what did local burial, so we clarified that. The conversation regarding punitive nature, now I think that that's a, I mean, you can use whatever language you want to use. This is the fine was reduced from 250 to 150 after conversations with the industry. For him to say that he's not seeing it, the final copy, that is again disingenuous. Staff and I met with him, gave him the legislation, it has not been changed. I mean, the probate sheet has not been changed. So for an individual to come, public or otherwise, and make these falsehoods is a bit concerning. I'm willing to talk about the merits of the legislation, but I'm not willing to entertain falsehoods when it's clearly in front of the reader, and when it's clearly that I've made efforts to collaborate with stakeholders, it's clearly I don't only listen to stakeholders, but made corrections, implemented their suggestions in this legislation that you see in the report. But if we're gonna talk about the legislation, let's talk about why. People of color have been losing property value, wealth, in this country, in this state, for a long time. Now, you have in front of you the legislation, you have in front of you the whereas clause, but if I were to read it to you, a national survey says that 67% of Americans do not have a will. Step one, among minorities, the stats are pronounced. Step one, among minorities, the stats are pronounced sixty-seven percent, for black, uh, for people of color, seventy-seven percent, and eighty-two percent of Hispanics. So what does that mean? Without a will, the property cannot be probate, well, it has to be probated. If you do not have a clear title, you can't do that. That's called tangled titles. So people of color, those being not wise to the merits of this situation, lose out, and to the tunes of a hundredth of millions of dollars. Now, many of you know I'm a licensed real estate professional, thirty years, I've seen this firsthand. I've seen it with my, with my own relatives. Why did I say the industry? Because they are trusted advisors, they are pillars in our community, they are where people go first for information, and they are respected as they should be. So people say, well, this information is registered wills or pro bono territory. It's not a substitute, it's a complement to those services, it's a complement. Now, if the one fifty is a punitive, let's put it in perspective here. The average sales price of a house in Wilmington, Delaware is three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. There is a, 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 a fine, if you want to call it that, of a hundred and fifty dollars, which is less than point zero zero five percent of that value. So if we're weighing things, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tip the scale on the person who could lose three hundred thousand dollars because of information. Now, don't get me wrong, it's not the fault of the industry. It's a collaborative approach to educate the consumer that they should take steps about probating their property, so they don't get lost in tangled titles, so they don't lose their property, because they can't corral relatives, they don't know the process. Now, again, if you look at the legislation, as I know you have, it's clear. It's clear in its intent, it's clear in the, in the steps that it takes, that, uh, it identifies the probate information sheet, it provides the definitions, providers, and again, I look, I look at you, section five dash one six two, requirements, hand delivered. This is nothing laborious. This information is, put it in, put it in the file of papers that you would normally give to a consumer.
Councilmember White, you are approaching your, your five minute.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You will have another opportunity to speak at the end.
I'm gonna wrap it up, Mr. President, thank you. So again, um, I'll wait for the other comments from my colleagues, Mr. President, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Caber.
Well, first I want to thank Councilman White for the education above what's in the legislation. Um, and again, it goes to show that you gotta listen to all sides, um, of the matter before making decisions. I already said I would support the legislation, um, but now I'm gonna support it more on its merit than just to vote for legislation for my colleague. Um, and I think this is a matter that is very important and very serious and worth discussing and, you know, the perspective, um, that, and I apologize because I didn't even look at it that way, I'm looking at it as to the work I'm doing in Wilmington with the vacant properties and trying to stabilize our neighborhoods, I wasn't even thinking of the loss, the loss of wealth that, when a person buys a house, that is sometimes the very first person in the family to buy that house, that is so much to them, that is sometimes all that they have, and to lose it, to lose it because of basic lack of preparation or knowledge, that is a travesty, that is a travesty, and that is what this legislation hopes to address, and I truly commend you and, um, congratulate you for bringing it forth and educating us, and certainly if there's more work that needs to be done to finesse this, surely, but for people to understand the importance of, uh, hereditary wealth and to do the right things so that you can ensure your family, um, that legacy, so important, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Okay, so first of all, I want to say that I agree one hundred percent with all the data in terms of, you know, the percentage of individuals, Americans, and, and the great loss, I, I agree with that. I agree that, you know, we should take opportunities to make sure we educate our constituents and residents. Um, what I don't agree with is that as Mr. Schumberg, and I reached out to a couple other funeral directors, Wright is one, Mr. Schumberg, and they are very willing to make sure that the information gets put in a packet as it relates to go to register of wills. I mean, this is a free service, register of wills, record of deeds, these are free services in the legislation, it mentions that we're gonna post it on the website. And again, like I said, you know, should the industry be penalized because individuals refuse to go to the register of wills? Should the industry be penalized because they don't go to record of deeds? I agree that we should educate them, but I do, it doesn't mean because the piece of paper or they receive it that the person, the families are gonna take it to the registers of will, there, what is the reinforcement to make sure that, okay, if this is followed, that, that's gonna make a difference? So, when I read this, I think it's a great ideal, I think that we should educate our constituency, but I just don't see why the industry should be penalized because individuals refuse to go to the register of wills, individuals refuse to go to the record of deeds for whatever reason, so we're putting the penalty on the industry? It's just something about that that just does not seem right, because the information is there, it's free information, and I do agree we should educate, one hundred percent, but I don't agree with us penalizing the industry for that, because there's no guarantee that residents are gonna go and do that, but yet they're gonna be punitively penalized. They're gonna have to pay whether the person go and, and follow through or not, so there's no guarantee with this. And I would suggest that we work with the funeral homes to say, to agree to make sure they put the information in a packet, yes, I support that one hundred percent. And so I'm not going to vote no, but I'm going to vote absent, because I think we should consider that. That is not their burden to bear. We should educate the residents, yes, is it the burden should be on the industry? I disagree with that, and I have to, I'm gonna have to vote absent, and I can not support it with the one fifty. Yes, put it in the packet, make sure the directors put it in their packets to make sure their residents, I'm sorry, get it, but to punitize the, the industry, I, I don't think we should do that, because there's no guarantee and there's no reinforcement to make sure that anything's done about it. That's all I have to say, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Spadola, followed by Councilmember Bracy.
Thank you, Council President, um, I have similar concerns, as shared by Councilmember Harley and Mr. Schumberg, and I appreciate any, uh, of course, support the intent, uh, but specifically with the probate information sheet, um, I would appreciate any clarity from the sponsor as to why we can't have a copy of that now before we approve it, why we have to wait to see it, um, because I would feel more comfortable being able to support it, and I think everybody would if we could see what they were producing, because that's a pivotal piece of the legislation, what they're handing out, yet we're voting on it now, we can't even see what's going to be handed out. Uh, and also, Council President, I believe you're in the industry, and if you share your thoughts at some point, we'd be happy to hear.
Thank you, Councilmember Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I too support the, the spirit of this legislation, um, but I have deep concerns around the, um, the fine for, um, funeral directors who, um, aren't tracking or don't track or, uh, giving out this information. I don't think that that is fair, um, especially for information that is free and will be, will be located on a website, um, to then penalize them for not pointing someone to the website or not hand delivering a sheet of paper or emailing it to them. I think there may be a better way for us to come to a resolution, um, and I think that, um, something that's gonna affect an industry, um, like, like this, um, even though it's an easy ask to have them add something to, um, add this probate information to their packets, and I think they should. Um, I just don't know if this is the way that we get them to do it, um, and so I, I too have some concerns around, um, this legislation as it, as it is written, and I also wonder, um, and hopefully the sponsor could speak to, whether he's had a conversation with the register of wills, um, and if so, what was the outcome of that conversation, thank you.
Thanks, so nice.
Yes, Councilmember Harley.
Yes, I, I just wanted to be on record that I did speak to the sponsor, so, you know, he's just not hearing, you know, my concerns, um, regarding this legislation. He knows, um, that I have much respect for him as my council colleague, and again, I want to underscore and amplify the fact that, yes, this is a good idea in terms of educating, um, families and if there's any way that our funeral directors in the industry can just put a copy in a packet, that would be great. Um, and not to be repetitive, but I don't think they should be penalized for something that is free and that individuals can easily find on a website. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, I, I do think this is a great piece of legis, of Councilmember McCoy.
Yes, um, actually, uh, this is for the sponsor, I just had one question, because I do find that, um, I just wanted to find out exactly how is enforcement, how will we find out whether or not they were actually doing what we've asked them to do? Where, where is this, uh, enforcement and this penalty, how do we take care of that? I do see L and I, but you know how we do L and I. And I just wanted to make certain that, I'm like, that was all, that was basically it, I just wanted to make certain that we had understanding about the enforcement, that was it.
Alright, thank you. Yes, I do think this is a great piece, um, and I do understand that there are some concerns, and I think that it's our, our responsibility to address those concerns, uh, maybe next session, but I am gonna support it, because I think at the end of the day, the intent is, is what I'm voting for, and he just, Councilmember White is trying to protect families who are extremely vulnerable for lack of knowledge. And I'm, as a funeral director, I am perfectly okay with, um, giving, um, my, my families a, a piece of paper, creating a document where they can sign for it, and we get fined in the funeral industry a lot more than a hundred and fifty dollars if we don't provide certain documents, I'm not trying to count anyone's money, but, um, I'm gonna support it, because I think it's, it's a good piece and it's gonna help a lot of people in the city, just, just to be more aware of, uh, you know, what happens when someone in their family passes away. I understand that it's gonna be on websites, but families aren't automatically gonna go to our website, they're not gonna, they're gonna come to us, and I think it's our responsibility to help, and this, I think the intent of this legislation is to help, it's not to hurt. So I'm gonna support it, and again, I think if there are concerns, which there are concerns, I think we just need to address those concerns, maybe clean it up next session, but I'm, I'm absolutely on board, because I think it's gonna, it's gonna help a lot of families who just don't know and who are in a position to lose a lot of, um, family wealth if they don't have that knowledge, thank you. Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Funeral homes are often the first point of contact for families after a loved one's passing. This makes them uniquely positioned to provide timely and relevant information about probate, ensuring families can take the necessary steps to avoid tangled titles and associated challenges. Yes, this information is available, but many families in other locations, but many families are unaware of these resources or don't access them until there are complications. Providing this information to fam, providing this information in funeral homes ensures families are informed early and can act promptly, reducing legal and financial burdens. The one hundred and fifty dollar penalty is intended to encourage compliance without being overly punitive. It underscores the importance of this issue and ensures consistency in providing this critical information to families. The document was available in, the probate sheet was available in committee, I'm sorry if you did not get it or you did not attend the committee. The document with the information sheet was, um, created by law, not by Vincent White, but they did reach out to all the additional resources, um, and in closing, there are no guarantees in life. The only guarantee I can say is without this information, a family is gonna be wrapped up and could possibly, I know that for a fact, and lose their property, as in so many cases that I've come across. And we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, as someone said, could be the first home in the, in the house, in the household, the first homeownership. So with all due respect, I'm not gonna err on the side of the industry, not that they've done anything wrong, but I do respect them as trusted advisors, as well as the community, they're pillars. It's the most logical place to prevent, to be proactive and prevent these, these, uh, these potential challenges that people lose their home. Mr. President, can we call for a question, please?
Uh, Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby? Councilwoman Darby? Councilwoman Harley?
Absent, present?
Present.
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Present.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Present.
President Congo?
Yes.
Seven yays, three present, and three absent.
Declare adopted. Councilmember McCoy. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember White presenting on behalf of Councilmember Oliver.
Mr. President, on behalf of Councilmember Oliver, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-four zero fifty-five, Agenda zero four eight nine, and ordinance to amend Chapter three of the city code to increase the fine for dog owners whose dog bites someone while off leash.
Mr. President, I move that that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and vote for a yea and no vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and called for a yea or nay vote on the question. Councilmember White?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, this is an ordinance, uh, as I always said, presented to increase the fines for individuals and owners of dogs who bite others while off leash. The ordinance also makes initial corrections of the code.
See no hands raised? Councilmember Harley.
Oh, yes, um, thank you, Mr. President, I do think that this is a good piece of legislation. I know of several people that have been victims of dog bites, and I hope that, um, with this ordinance that the owners of animals, um, that they will take it more seriously. And I just want to say to the family of Kathy who lost her life, um, over a dog bite, I just want to extend my sympathy, I know it's been a couple of years, but if, um, her sister is still in the chambers, I, I just want to extend my sympathy, um, to, to, to pass away prematurely over a dog bite is really a tragedy, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Caber.
Uh, yes, I'm in strong support of this ordinance, um, not to be repetitive, but I too was attacked by a dog that was off leash, happy to have my hand in my fingers, and I think that if you own a pet, especially if it's a dangerous pet, you need to be responsible, and you if it's a dangerous pet, you need to be responsible and you need to be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised, Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Ten yeas and three absent.
Declare adopted. Councilmember McCoy.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance 24056, revision 1 to agenda 0490, an ordinance to amend Chapter 44 of the City Code to increase the income threshold for the exception of caregiver, elderly or disabled persons from real estate taxation.
Mr. President, I move that this be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for a yea or nay vote.
So moved.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and called for a yea or nay vote on the question.
You know, I'm sorry, I don't have the proper language in front of me. I do, I would like to make a motion to do a floor amendment. Thank you. No problem. All right, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a floor amendment at this time.
So moved.
Second.
She didn't make the motion.
You have to state it first.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I would like to delete both references of 300% of the, no problem. I would like to delete both references of 300% of the federal poverty level and replace them with 200% of the federal poverty level. They both should be on page two. So as the income of property, of a property owner does not exceed 200% of the federal poverty level for a family size, and that was A, and then also in B, the combined income of two of them does not exceed 200% of the federal poverty level for family size.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to accept the floor amendment, but this time we are going to, are there any questions about the floor amendment? Anyone have any concerns about just speaking specifically to the floor amendment? Honored Clerk, please call for the roll.
Are you doing a roll call on the floor amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Ten yeas and three absent for the floor amendment.
Declare adopted for the floor amendment. Did you want to speak to the legislation? Councilmember McCoy?
Yes. So this is the second time I've actually brought back this piece of legislation. I've gotten a chance to speak to several of my colleagues. They did express concerns because of the fact that we were going into a new administration. One of the things I did want to make them aware of that, although we were going to be increasing the federal poverty level for the guidelines when it comes to property tax, making more people, making it more accessible for some of our elderly and disabled, I realized that going into, you know, going into the next administration, people had concerns, and, you know, we are looking at the new budget. So with that being stated, and also making them aware that this would not be enacted until July 1st, so that this would be incorporated in the new budget, I did, I did hear them out, and I decided to try to give us, like, find a meeting point for that. So now, where $15,000 was the, was the amount for a single person to, they could not make more than that amount in order to qualify for the property tax discount for our elderly and our disabled, now that price would be, that amount would be actually increased up to like $30,120, so that they were still, more people could qualify for that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Bracy, followed by Councilmember Spadola.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Councilmember Spadola.
Thank you, Councilmember for the sponsor. Was there any, did you run that by WeFAC? I'm just curious if they gave an updated statement on 200%. And I see that there's no fiscal impact listed. It says it's unknown. Can you speak to any sort of a fiscal impact? I know the administration was guessing about a 300%, but I'm curious if they were able to provide you a 200%. Thank you.
No, thank you. Actually, they were kind of guessing around the 300% as well. They took a little bit of time. They finally gave me information when it came to the 300%. Unfortunately, it was pretty much right before we brought it to the floor the last time. And so I wanted to make sure my colleagues were aware of what that information was, got a chance to look over, and we had a second conversation. So the 200%, even though I did ask for it, I still move forward with good faith, believing that we would find what that space is, because at the end, we still need to understand how it's going to go into the budget. Now, my colleague, who is the Vice Chair of Finance, we had a very long conversation about how that would work, and there are different things that she would like to see, I guess, fall into place after the next term. But I was insistent because, even though we have to wait on this, I'm sorry, I'm going a little off track, but even though we have to wait on issues with the assessment, there's still going to be a time where people are not going to be able to qualify for this while we figure out what they're going to do with the assessment. And I want to make certain more people got on this as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember White.
I just wanted to just briefly state again, I know I've talked extensively to Councilwoman McCoy. You know, as the Chair of Finance, I do have serious concern just about the unknown fiscal impact, although I support the spirit of the legislation. You know, we're going to have to assess it if it does pass, what it looks like going into the next budget, because what I would hate to do is we look at raising property taxes on middle-class families throughout the city. So that's my only concern, is that the burden will be on the middle class. And if we do this expansion with unknown fiscal impact, so if it passes, I don't know if it's going to pass, but if it does pass, we'll have to address that in the 109.
Councilmember White?
Yes, Mr. President. My question to the sponsors, do we know the percent of households currently at 15%, I mean at 15,000 in the city?
I'll answer that question. At the moment, Director Taylor gave me a number of like a little over 600 families were able to participate out of the 72,000 people here within the city. Just to give you a little further information, the numbers that I've presented to you have been in place since 1998. The city has not taken into consideration, you know, what are the income medians and things of that nature for more than 26 years, and I think that was time that we did so.
Follow-up?
Yes.
Have, has the sponsor taken into account how the reassessment would hinder or increase the obligation on the city if this ordinance was passed?
I have, I have had that conversation. Like I stated, the conversation I have pretty much with the longest was Councilman Harley, and we have had that conversation. We've realized that this is something that may, that we may have to take a look at. But I have been having this conversation with the Finance Department for more than six months, and for it to finally come down to the very last meeting is, you know, I just wanted to make certain I no longer had any pending legislation, and this is something I wanted to take care of.
One, one last question.
Yes.
Ma'am sponsor, I guess my question is, in your opinion, does this, does this, does this hinder or aid the city's budgetary position in the 2025 year?
Does it hinder?
Well, if this was to pass, what's your, what's your assessment of how this would affect the budget? And I understand you don't have a number.
Right.
But, but what's your general assessment? You have conversations with people, I don't. So what's your general?
Well, my general assessment is that when you look at council and how we've been actually working with the budget for these past four years, we've actually been very conservative when it comes to our spending side, not, you know, based on the things that we were trying to get done. We were made aware of, you know, whatever those hindrances are, you know, of course, it's always like, you know, boogeyman, like, oh, no, we can't spend too much money. So we've been very conservative. I do believe that we have the funds to cover this, and not stating that, you know, we're just going to blow all of the money. But another thing is that we're taking into consideration, how many more people is going to, how many people, more people is going to be affected? Who will get to, to apply and qualify? So it is only for people who are living in their homes, it is only for people who are aged and disabled, and only for people who are actually, that meet that income. So initially, when we were stated it was going to be 300%, our director, our Finance Director stated that about 2,000 more people may qualify, which was a large number that he believed because at that time, it was going to go up to about 40 something thousand. Now with a more conservative approach, we've lowered it by a little 10, and so I believe that it would be less than the 2,000 that he initially thought.
Thank you. Any other follow-up? Councilmember White?
Thank you, Mr. President. My concern is that we're spending money that the city hasn't, we're spending money we don't have. I think of the legislation for the water assistance, and I realize some of the pushback that we have regarding these categories, protected classes, that we, that we push back on. So more so as a statement, I'm concerned that the, that the legislation may spend money that we don't have in our pockets yet, possibly taking us from a neutral tax position to a plus tax position because of meeting this requirement. That's, that's my concern.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley, followed by Councilmember Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, so Councilmember McCoy was correct in terms of us having a lengthy conversation as the Vice Chairperson of Finance for the last year and a half. I've been really, you know, paying attention on both sides and understanding how the City of Wilmington balances our budget as it relates to operating, as it relates to our reserves, as it relates to our tax revenue, our rainy day fund, et cetera. Spending time with our Finance Director and fully understanding, you know, the impact of us voting on this legislation, not fully understanding the impact of the Newcastle County Assessment, which the City of Wilmington is going to be receiving that file in the first quarter. Secondly, our tax point right now is 2.115, and depending on what happens with EMS, as we all know, we pretty much absorbed the $3.2 million as related to St. Francis not wanting to, we knew the contract, the City of Wilmington had to figure that out. We have our union contracts that are going to be up this budget year. We have our health benefits that we know that are going to be, they go up a percentage. We have more money that we have to put out in our roads, et cetera. And as it relates to the number of people that are in the system right now, we actually have 715 people that are taking advantage of our tax exemption. We have 75, I believe, of disabled, and then the other 640 or 65 and over. With the 200%, it will open the eligibility of at least between 25 to 50% more individuals, which will bring our property tax, taxes down year over year. And we, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is because these are the things that are going to be considered in 2025. As my colleague, who I know does her due diligence as it relates to legislation, my only question is this, what is the compelling reason as to why we need to do that right now versus waiting until the first quarter after we get our assessment from Newcastle County, after we fully understand the impact of this EMS, this ambulance situation? And right now, we're on a revenue neutrality with our tax point, and with the new mayor, that could change and that could make a major difference. And so I am in support of us raising that threshold from $15,000 a year to possibly maybe $30,000, maybe 25, but I just feel so uncomfortable, us voting on legislation, not fully understanding the impact and knowing that this is something that we could clearly know what we're doing in the first quarter, because there's no compelling reason as to why we need to vote on this tonight versus waiting till when we know exactly what it is that we're voting on, because we're going to open the door for a number of people to start signing up, that's one part of it, and all these other items that I've been talking to our finance people, WeFAC, they weighed in on this, and they're outside, they're not City of Wilmington employees, so they weighing on it. And so I'm in support of it as it relates to the spirit behind it. I think we should do it. I commend you for working on this, but there is no compelling reason as to why we have to vote on this tonight. You said you didn't want pending legislation hanging out there. Well, this is legislation that really could be voted on in the first quarter of 2025, especially since there's a number of uncertainties here. So I just wanted to share that, and, you know, on the record. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Fields.
I forgot I raised my hand. I'm sorry. My, you know, my question to Councilmember McCoy was basically what everyone else was asking about the actual fiscal impact. And, and I think Vince said it, I was thinking, was it, was it going to be a plus or negative when it, when it comes to the city overall as a budget? And how do, like, if we're going to do this, where are we going to be able to make up that minus? Like, and what part, you know what I mean? Like, so if, if we're taken away, in what section or what part of our budget are we going to be able to either balance that loss out or get, get something else in, according to what this is saying? And I understand, you said it hasn't been changed since 1998, and it might be a reason why, because, you know, we, we're a City of 72 or 70,000 or 72,000. So that's, that's, that's kind of like where we should be. Not saying that there aren't people, because I was hoping I was going to be able to get on here, then when it said elderly, I said, no, I can't get on here. So, but, you know, I'm just looking at the threshold, and I was like, I mean, it's good, and it benefits a lot of people, but I just wanted to see like the fiscal impact and then, you know, how can we make that up? Do you know what I mean? If we're going to take something away, we either going to, either we can balance it out, you know, whatever we took away, we could put back in, or, you know, find something. See if they would have voted my legislation, and we would have had a plus.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabrera, followed by Councilmember Bracy.
Thank you. Mr. President, just like we had not raised our fines and fees for over 30-some years, and we have taken upon ourselves to do so, I strongly believe that we need to do the same in the opposite direction, that we also need to raise the thresholds of, you know, the numbers that people can qualify for these programs. So in that, Councilmember McCoy, I celebrate you and believe this is, you know, excellent in wanting to do that. Where I, where my pause is and will be, is going to be, at the end of the day, when I think of what I was told, what do council members do? Well, we really only have one, our one most important job is to pass a balanced budget. Anything else that we do, you know, the ordinances and stuff, that's part of the job, but that's it. That's really our sole biggest responsibility, that we have to pass a balanced budget. So obviously, any legislation, anything that we, you know, present, we look at fiscal impacts for that reason, so that we know how this will impact our budget, can we do it? The spirit of the legislation, excellent, and yes, we must do something. But I do firmly believe that we should have the numbers, and even though extending it to July is appreciated to And even though extending it to July is appreciated to give us time to assess that, but we're voting on something and giving us six months to assess it. But we don't know what that finality is gonna be. So we've already voted for it, even though the finality is negative and that we shouldn't do it. But I agree with it. I, and we definitely need to raise the medium. And I can't be a hypocrite because I'm speaking of how we should raise the threshold for the people who apply to qualify for the water fund bill. That should be raised so that more people participate. Because we do have money in that fund that's going unused. So let's help more people. So Councilmember McCoy, I'm, I'm with you 100% on this one, but I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not gonna support it tonight for the reasons I stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, supported this legislation, or I'm in support of it because of pretty much everything what everyone said. We need to be acting and doing something to, um, make sure that we are serving as many citizens, um, as possible, especially when we're talking about the elderly and disabled. And, uh, the threshold hasn't been increased in such a long timeframe. I also, as a member of finance, the finance committee, and someone who, um, wants to ensure that the city is fiscal responsible, totally understand why, um, the concern around what the fiscal impact is. But if 750 people are, 15 people are already on it and it's gonna go, it's gonna increase by to less than 2,000. Cuz if 2,000 was what it would increase to as far as eligible residents at 300,000, um, and she's decreased it to 200,000, that means less than 2,000 people in the city of 72,000 will be able to qualify for this benefit, which I really have a hard time believing that's gonna break the bank for the city. Um, so the other reason why I am supportive of this is because we do have, we're going into budget season and what, from what I'm understanding from the sponsor, and maybe this is a point of clarification, is that when talking to Director Taylor, part of this con, this conversation, this is the impetus to move this into the budget season so that we do get clarity on, one, the fiscal impact and, and all of the things that are needed and necessary to make sure that July 1st, we're prepared for this to go into effect. Now, maybe I'm mistaken, but that's what I, I'm assuming is the reason why this doesn't take effect until July 1st. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was my question slash comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fields.
Yes, um, I just wanted to kinda follow up and echo Vice Chair Harley's sentiments. Um, there's too much unknown, and I think one factor is that this actually affects the water fund. Um, so that hasn't been discussed, but not only is it real property taxes, but also, uh, affects qualifications for the water sewer fund, um, exemption as well. Um, so again, you know, I've said this in the past on the record for many years, you know, we have to be very careful, especially with coming out of COVID and that we're not gonna have access to, um, uh, ARPA funds after 2025. So, you know, again, I don't wanna get to a point where we're laying off, uh, uh, city, uh, workers and raising property taxes. That's not where we wanna be. So again, I understand where we are, but I think we need to revisit it. Let's look at the reassessment numbers. And I'm still supportive of this initiative, but let's do it in the budget time, not pass it before. Let's reexamine it in the first quarter, and then we can reevaluate what the numbers look like.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Fields, followed by Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, my question is, or maybe more so of a statement, um, even though a legislation may be passed tonight, there is a chance for this to be amended. Am I, am I correct? An ordinance can be, you know, you can add an amendment to the ordinance? Is that something that could be done? I'm saying like, we don't, we're not quite sure what this, what this impact is gonna have. But before you go into the budget, right? And we figure out what, what the monies will be, um, is there a way that you would look at possibly, um, changing what was voted on? And you, maybe amending it or someone, um, someone putting in amendment to whereas it's not so much of a, um, fiscal impact? I guess looking at the budget or seeing where things go. I'm not sure. I mean, I'm just asking a question. I just wanna, you know, I'm, my thing is, like, I like the, um, I don't know where I get to the spirit of it, but I like the, I like the suggestion that you've made when it comes to, um, increasing the threshold. However, I guess my question is, um, laws are made, but they're, they're also made to, they can also be amended. So just, that's just a, that's just a formality I'm thinking about, um, in the near future. If you pass it tonight, something happens in, um, in 109. Or you don't pass it tonight, it doesn't pass tonight, but you can look at working on it in the 109. That's all I'm asking. And so that's why I said it wasn't really like a question, it was more so of a statement. So I don't know. But I was just, you know, giving, giving it a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley?
Yes, so, um, there was a question asked earlier, um, as it related to, um, the percentage, I believe. But the, the key thing is that there's no compelling reason why it has to be voted on tonight. There's no compelling reason, um, as it relates to with all the uncertainties. Um, most of us are gonna be here during the next session. And there are a number of, of major, um, high-priced tags that we know as a city that we're going to have to encumber. I support 100% increase in the threshold. My gosh, $15,000. I'm in support of it. I just don't understand as a council body, you know, why we would be voting on legislation with all these uncertainties when we can simply wait until we get the information. I, I, but again, I'm, want my council colleague to know, I'm in total support. She said she didn't want things hanging out, okay? She didn't want this hanging out at the end of this, this term versus putting it in the budget. And if you vote on this tonight in the budget, they're gonna have to work around it. Because if we agree that this should be 200% in the budget discussions, it's gonna be, we have a legislation that says property taxes, um, we're going to reduce the property tax line. Someone said, is it gonna be a negative or a positive? It's gonna reduce year over year, our property tax line. That's what it's gonna do, year over year. Um, and again, you know, we're, we support the fact that it needs to be increased. But just to answer the question, it's gonna reduce the property tax line year over year. Is there a way to make it up? We have a reserve, a taxation reserve. I believe that we can work it out. That is not even the concern in terms of is, is it, can we work it out? I do believe that we can. I just believe good governance means that we know there's uncertainties. We have the time to fix it, to understand what we're dealing with and to vote on it and feel good about it and can have a clap. That, that's, that's it and that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And seeing no other hands raised, we're gonna return to the sponsor.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, I just wanna let my colleagues know that I did get a chance to talk to, uh, tried to talk to everyone, making certain that you understood what this was about. Um, when I state that I didn't want anything hanging out, uh, any, uh, piece of legislation hanging out, it wasn't more so like I was cavalier about it. The fact remains is that you actually have more information than I do. And I've been asking for this since before July. So for you to be able to get all of that information, when I've been requesting it all this time, is an issue. So basically, even if I had it before we actually voted on the budget last year, it, it would still be, oh, we gotta wait until the assessment. So that's one. Um, so it's not so much as in, um, you know, I do believe that people are definitely, you know, a little afraid of the unknown, of course. You know, so we definitely wanna make certain that we have understanding. At the same time, we needed to look at what was going on when it comes to the, our, mostly our elderly. I see now that they decided to do our, um, home repair lottery is gonna be specific to our seniors. I appreciate that. I'm so glad that this is happening. I'm like, we have got to figure out a way for our elderly to age in place. They're talking about, we're not, it's going, our taxes are gonna go down year after year. They truly are if our elderly cannot stay. When they leave, we, their property taxes leave with them. So I just wanted to make certain that people have understanding where I was going at with this piece of legislation. I am not upset. I am, I've always followed whichever process that was required in order to get our, um, the legislation or the ordinance that's passed. It is an idea, it's a thought. I researched with the fellows, put it through to our law, have conversations with our, um, administration and the different department heads. And before I have something to actually pass on to you guys, this piece here just took a little, a little longer because obviously, people didn't wanna see things move forward. But, you know, um, it's a little, it's a little touchy cuz I actually had something else big passed this year too. So maybe they wanted to see how that, how that worked out before we did anything else when it came to the water policy. So with that being stated, I don't have anything else to state. I still say that we have, I believe that we have the funds cuz we've been very, very conservative year after year about how we were spending things. They make it seem like we haven't been, but when we, when it's time to look at the budget, we, I've seen that we have. I've seen that we have. So I'm still gonna go ahead and just, I'm gonna put it on the floor and let y'all vote on it.
Thank you. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman White?
Mr. President, regrettably, I have to vote. Present, as I have a conflict with the legislation. I've never been referred as elderly, elderly as much tonight as I've ever been in my life. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Darby?
I don't see her on.
Yeah, I don't think she's on.
Online.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Harley?
Present.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
No.
Councilman Field? Councilwoman Cabrera?
No.
Councilman Spadola?
No.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Five yeas, three nays, two present and three absent.
Declare defeated.
May I be excused?
Councilmember, uh, Fields? Yes. Yes, she may be excused. McCoy and, uh, Field. Councilmember Cabrera?
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 24069, Agenda 0517. Whereas the City of Wilmington is an entitlement community for purposes of the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnership Program, the Emergency Solution Grant Program, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program.
I move this resolution be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a yea and a net vote.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. The resolution be received, recorded, filed and adopted by a yea and a vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, this is basically a housekeeping, um, legislation resolution. We are going to, uh, the city's going to file an amendment to the HUD found, uh, funding that has been allotted to Villa Maria as there has been a delay with the construction. Instead of having those $450,000 sit there, it will be, um, returned to the CDBG funds and it will be directed to Newcastle County Let Heiser and Healthy Homes Program.
And seeing no hands raised? Did you have a question? Councilmember Harley?
Oh, yes. Um, first of all, I want to commend, um, the fact that these funds have been, let me make sure I'm on the right piece of legislation. Um, I'll wait. It's not the piece of legislation I thought it was. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember White?
Mr. President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
So noted.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley?
I, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Noted.
Seeing no hands raised, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eight yeas and five absent.
Declare adopted.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution 24070, Agenda 0518. Whereas the City of Wilmington is an entitlement community for purposes of Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Program, the Emergency Solution Grant Program, and the Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS Program. And whereas the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Regulations require consolidated application process for funds for CDBG program, the home program, the E.
I move this resolution be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a yea and a vote.
Second.
Mr. President?
It's been properly, it's been properly moved and second. Resolution be received, recorded, filed and adopted by a yea and a vote on the question.
Thank you. This is to make another amendment to those same, uh, US Department Housing and Urban Development Funds. Um, we had granted a $15,000 grant to this Center for Horticulture for its branches, the Chances, Chances Reentry Program. However, they did decline the grant. So in lieu of them not accepting the $15,000, it is now being granted to the YWCA Delaware Home Life Management Center, um, which is a homeless shelter for victims of domestic violence.
Thank you. Did they say why they declined the grant? Did they, is it?
No, Mr. President, I'm not privy to that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harley?
Yes, this is the piece of legislation that I was thinking it was previously. But I just wanna say that I'm really happy that these funds were, um, able to be redirected to the YWCA Homeless Shelter, um, for victims of domestic violence. Um, I've had numerous opportunities to talk to some of the leadership there in terms of the work that they're doing. So every little bit of funding that they can get, um, it helps. And I'm just really excited about it being right, redirected over to that organization. And I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yes, um, I would just like to say that, um, I have had inner workings with this organization as well. And I know they do a good job, no matter if you call them morning, noon or night. They definitely work hard to help those individuals that are homeless and, um, that, um, may have, um, been in domestic violence. And so I'm glad that one door closed and another one opened, that they will be able to receive these funds to help those individuals. And I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Any other comments from a sponsor? If not, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eight yeas and five absent.
Declare adopted. This time, we will move to petitions and communications. Councilmember White?
Mr. President, may I go last?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Harley?
Yes, um, first of all, I want to say to all of our staff and council members that are gonna be leaving, that it has been my pleasure, first of all, I will start with Mona. It has been my pleasure, um, Mona, to work with you and to have us as our, uh, Chief of Staff. I know we were able to express our sentiments earlier, but I wanted to just, you know, let you know that it has been my pleasure to Mary Bell, the same as Mona, it has been my pleasure. And, um, all the best, especially in retirement. I have a, a special little thing with the retirement piece, okay? Being a part of the retirement club. All the best to both of you. Um, to, um, Mr. First District. I'm gonna start with Mr. First District. I think I'm going to miss his, excuse me, uh, Mr. President Point of Order. I think I'm gonna miss that. Um, Mr. Point of Order, okay? You get it, Council President?
I do.
So I am gonna miss that. I really, um, have enjoyed working with you, Councilmember White, which you stand for, a man that says what he means, means what he says. And just, you know, being who you are and. And just, you know, being who you are and, and sticking to it. Um, all the best to you, um, in your future endeavors. I know you're gonna continue to rise and continue to do great work in the community. And to Councilmember Fields, my little Spitfire over there, my little Spitfire. But, um, thank you both for, for the work that you have done in the community. Um, and as it relates to making such an impact in your communities. And as we heard your constituents tonight, Councilmember Fields, um, it has just been an honor and the work that you have done, it definitely speaks for itself. And I'm going to miss you and, um, maybe I'll take on your quotes in twenty-twenty-five. If you, only if you send them to me, only if you send them.
I'll send them to you.
And, um, Mr. President, um, I wanna take a, a few minutes from one of the council members that left. Um, State Red Bolden, she sent a text to, um, asked me to make sure that we mentioned that Marva Pass who produces a show from the heart, um, that comes on, I guess, Channel twenty-eight?
Yes, Marva Richardson.
Marva Richardson, okay. Um, she asked me to make sure that it got announced and to extend, um, sympathy to the family and that we will be keeping that family, um, in our prayers. And, um, I just want to say to everyone, this has been a challenging one oh eight session, but a good one, a learning one and one of grown, growing or growth, should I say? And for me, I'm just taking it all in. I'm taking in what I've learned from each and every one of you. I'm taking in what could be different, what can be better. And I am looking forward to a, uh, a great, um, one oh ninth session. And I'm looking forward to working with our new, um, council members that were newly elected. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Um, I, the only thing I wish I could be there tonight, but just again, uh, echo the sentiments of our colleagues. I appreciate each and every, uh, staff member who contributed to one oh eight, Chrisley, Mary Bell and Mona. Um, Mary Bell, I know it was all the better, uh, bigger and better things in the world of retirement and of course Mona. Uh, I, um, look forward to seeing the work that you're gonna do, uh, hopefully helping us, uh, with money from the county coming up. So I appreciate everyone, of course, my colleagues, uh, Councilman White and, and my sister over there in the Fifth District, um, Brigida. And, uh, look forward to seeing your continued work in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, first, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays as we go into, uh, the multitude of holidays that we all, all celebrate according to our cultures. Um, the next time we meet, uh, for our inauguration on January seventh, it will be after the Epiphany, uh, which is the Feast of the Three Wise Men. Uh, they're wise known as El Dia de los Reyes for us Latinos. So Feliz Dia de los Reyes, um, to my brothers and sisters, since we won't be here in January to do that. I do want to publicly thank both my colleagues, Councilwoman White, who I will still be close to because I don't live far from him. I'm in his district now. Um, you both have been a breath of fresh air. Thank you for your dedication, the work that you have done for the multitude of Point of Orders, for, uh, making it your first, uh, matter of business to stop my legislation at your very first meeting. I have not forgotten. But I have enjoyed you and most of all, when we gather after the meetings here and there, um, being the only guy, being the gentleman, opening the doors for us, making sure we have our coats. I'm gonna call you the gentlemen of council. That is how I will remember you and coin you, the gentleman of council. We appreciate you. The ladies really appreciate you. And, uh, Brigida, you're my sister. Your mo, our mothers have done the same thing in our prospective communities. Uh, we're cut from the same cloth. I know that our work will continue regardless, um, uh, whether you're sitting here, but I will miss you, our good times, our little spats and seven. I will miss seven, most of all. On a sadder note, um, for those of you who remember the Jackson Inn, uh, a staple of our community which closed, um, you know, in the last couple of years. Fred Bourbon, the owner, uh, a good friend, an amazing photographer who has recorded the history of our state and beyond in pictures, has passed on. It was, uh, very heartbreaking to see that as I was thinking of him recently at the grand gala. He used to be there to take the pictures and, um, I checked my messages. I've been texting him for the last two months and most recently a week and a half ago to let him know I was thinking of him and we still hadn't been able to connect. And I have a resolution upstairs that he never got because he couldn't make his way over here and I was calling him to see if I could bring him. So yeah, my heart is very broken, um, when you think of the woulda, shoulda, coulda. I tried, but it wasn't enough and I didn't get to say, uh, goodbye and to be there with him. We also lost one of our former firefighters, Jose Manuel Prado. For those who may not know, he is the nephew of Ismael Prado, who was our first Hispanic firefighter. Jose served for twenty years. He retired. Um, I, my personal connections with Jose is that we grew up in Westchester. Our mothers were best friends and we became close as we both played in the band in St. Agnes. He played the trumpet. I played the clarinet and bass clarinet. And then we found ourselves living here in Wilmington. A very good friend during his time with the fire department, um, he was very active. He worked with the, the Young Explorers Program, um, and just, just someone that everyone, um, really enjoyed being around. He was an avid trumpet player, so you may see him around town at some of the, at the gigs with our local Hispanic bands. And I remember when I introduced him to Arturo Sandoval, how special that was to him. So he will be missed. Um, his services are tomorrow. Um, and just wanted to let the community know that we, um, lost, you know, two great people who have been a part of the fabric of Wilmington, Delaware. And happy holidays again to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spadola. Okay. Councilmember Bracy.
Um, just wanted to echo the sentiments of the other council members, Councilmember White. Um, you will be missed. Um, I've enjoyed the, the short time that we've gotten to be colleagues and work together and I know we'll still see each other in the community. And of course, to, uh, Councilwoman Brigida Fields, um, you're not going anywhere. You may not be here in, in the chambers with us, but we already know you're not going nowhere. And we're still gonna see you out and about and I look forward to, uh, the first time you come in here and give public comment. Cause I know it's coming.
And I'm going for three minutes.
And also, uh, to Councilman Mills, uh, my other, um, at-large colleague, um, who we'll miss as well. Um, we look forward to working with all of the new people that are coming in. But, uh, you know, transition's coming. It's, you know, we're disappointed to see you all leave. Mona, my girl, um, thank you for all of your service. We already, you know, did all of that. But, um, to you and Mary Bell and Anaya, you guys have been awesome as far as, um, keeping our office going and, you know, keeping the chaos at a minimum. So thank you and happy holidays to everyone, um, in the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, Council President. And I'm not gonna go over my five minutes, so, um, really quickly. I do have, uh, two events, okay? On, um, the Sun, Saturday, December twenty-first at twenty, um, of twenty twenty-four, eleven AM to two PM at William Hicks Anderson Community Center, Humbly Assisting Humanity and One Step at a Time in collaboration with the Mercedes M. Fields Christmas Breakfast. Um, we'll be hosting Pancakes and PJ's Winter Celebration. Join us for an afternoon of community collaboration as, as we spread warmth, joy, awareness and fun for all. So they're gonna have brunch and, um, a pancake station, pajamas and winter, winter item dis, dis, distribution, activities and family fun. And so, uh, last year they gave away a hundred and thirty-five pajamas. They gave away a hundred gift cards, eighteen bikes and there were two hundred and two, um, people, uh, kids and families that were in attendance. So please join me, um, on the twenty-first. I will be there. Not that I don't have a couple of other that I have to run around to, but, um, that one I will be at. On December twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, Hat and Hoodie Giveaway, Lazarus and Hood, Hood Millionaires Community Event, um, will host our annual hat and hoodie giveaway, um, at the La, the, the Lazarus Building this year. Um, if you need a hat and hoodie for kids, come out. Let's see, um, the outerwear and stuff are free. The address is seven nineteen East Tenth, Tenth Street, Wilmington, Delaware, one nine eight oh one. The number to call is three zero two six nine one seven one four six. Again, the number is three zero two six nine one seven one four six. And the time is from twelve PM to three PM. And I would just like to say, um, to everyone, it has been a pleasure. It has been a pleasure to be on City Council. I have grown so much. I have learned so much. And, um, the, the thing about it is just to be able to serve my community in this capacity, um, has been awesome. But I, I, I truly know, and I think the community knows, that, um, this is not the last time you will see me. You'll probably see me even more now that I'm not, um, in the elected seat. But, um, I just want to say, um, everybody from City Council to the Solicitor's Office, to the Mayor's Office, um, to my colleagues that I dealt with, um, I do appreciate you all. And I look forward to dealing with you all when I'm not in office. Um, and I hope that, you know, you will continue my legacy of, um, providing, um, Thanksgiving, breakfast, Thanksgiving lunch into the seniors and Christmas breakfast, um, in the upcoming budget as well. If not, I'm gonna be in it, I'm gonna be in, uh, seats anyway. But, um, and, uh, let me see, I, oh, Council President, I would like to say, I know we always did see eye to eye. I know that, you know, we had our spats here and there. However, I know that I could say certain things to you and we both would laugh. I could give you the eye, so now you won't be getting the eye. You won't be getting the eye or the finger taps or the, uh, or the pen going to tell you to look at me. So, um, I know you're gonna miss that, but, um, I just really want to say that I am grateful. And this has been a learning, a learning lesson and, uh, you know, to, uh, the new ones coming in, um, guard your gorilla knuckle up. If you don't know what that means, get ready. Um, because there's gonna be things that you, you, you had an idea of, but, uh, it's a bigger picture than that. It's a bigger picture. And, um, I'm glad to, um, I know it's probably kinda weird for me, for people to hear this, but I am glad that I am moving on. Because, um, God has opened doors that people thought were closed. And I, I thank God for all the collaborations and all the partners and, um, contacts that I have made in the last four years. And, um, be aw, be, be aware that I do have three projects that I started in my administration and I will continue. And I will be there at the ribbon cutting. So I, I have those, I have three more. But, um, other than that, honestly, um, thank you all. Really thank you all. And this has been nothing but a blessing. Nothing but a blessing. So I wish you all well. Happy holidays. I'm gonna miss calling the ki, I think I'm still gonna call you there. Um, I, I, I'm not gonna call out any names. I can't because if I do, I'm gonna miss somebody and I don't wanna miss anybody. Just know that, um, that I, I'm really, I'm really gonna miss you guys, but I'm still gonna be around. And one more time, I have to say to my colleagues that I collaborated with and I done work with, I appreciate you all. Whether we got along or not, or, um, like Councilwoman called me Spitfire, whether I raised my voice or not. But for those that found it, found it easy and worthy of collaborating with me when it came to doing things in the community, I appreciate that more than anything. And you know that the community appreciates you because I always put your names out there for those of you that work alone with me to make sure that I took care of the community. And on that note, I do have a quote. Hey, Councilwoman, if you wanna take over, you can. Look, cause, um, look, Bracy was like, good, cause then I don't have to say it. So the, oh, shoot. I know. I have it ready, Trippi. I did. I did have it ready. I'm telling you. Okay. It says, "If you're brave enough to say goodbye, life will reward you with a new hello." And it's polo, C O E L H L. But this meant good to me. Transition is, is great. Transition is great. And, um, I'm just smiling, but if anybody knows about a job hiring, I'm available. I cost a lot though. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Going to give Councilmembers Harley and Cabrera a few more minutes.
Thank you, Council President. I quickly want to remind everyone that on Saturday, December the twenty-first, this is a big deal as it relates to our community and families. On Saturday, December the twenty-first, from nine to one at the Chase Field House, there is going to be the Dreams Come True Christmas Toy Drive by the Community Cares of Delaware. They are presenting, I believe this is their third year, second or third year. Um, I attended the first one and it was truly amazing. I have never, ever attended a Christmas giveaway with that many toys. So again, on Saturday, December the twenty-first, from nine to one at the Chase Field House, four oh one Garrasus Lane. I believe everyone knows where the Field, um, Chase Field House is located and they are still accepting donations. And if, um, someone wants to donate and they need more information, I'm asking that they call the City Council Office. Um, the City Council Office if they would like to donate and if they would like more information. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm remiss for not having, um, mentioned this. The Wilmington Ballet is presenting The Nutcracker at the Playhouse on Rodney Square this weekend. Um, it is starring Ingrid Silva and Luis Fernando of the Dance Theater of Harlem with maestro Alan R. Scott and the Wilmington Ballet Orchestra. Uh, the December thirteenth and fourteenth, they will have, um, and Sunday, they'll have evening shows. And they have a two PM matinee on Saturday and Sunday. Um, we are sponsoring some children from the community, uh, to attend this event. Um, been reaching out to several groups and some of them have responded. Um, and then before I started hearing back from the children, I said, well, we might as well invite some seniors too, just in case the children don't show up. Um, so we got members of Los Abuelos coming. And the reason that this ballet is important, um, I had gone to the event at the, at their location, the Wilmington Ballet, is because I feel that our children, especially children of color, should see ballerinas that look like them. Be, because both Ingrid and Luis, they came from hardship in Brazil. And she was told by her teacher that she would never amount to anything. And, um, and Luis really had to fight, uh, to be able to study. And of course, men studying ballet was not a thing of their culture. So both of them had to really scrap and scrapple and fight to be where they are today. And I think that this is an inspiration and hope that we can give our people and our children to see that if they wanna do that, they can aspire to do that. Cause you don't see as many ballerinas of color, um, in the industry. So, um, we are sponsoring some of our community people to go and to participate and to celebrate Ingrid and Luis. And, um, RWITN is also covering, uh, their performance. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, as I address you tonight, I want to say a special thanks to council staff who's guided me, uh, in their own way, uh, through the process of being a council member and have encouraged, uh, me in their own way of doing the things right and the correct processes. So again, I want to thank council staff, those in front of us and WITN staff who has also been very supportive. As I address you tonight, my final member as a council, I want to reflect, I reflect with pride and gratitude on this chapter of service in my life. While my time here was brief, it has been meaningful extension of my over twenty-five years of unwavering dedication to the residents of the First District in the city of Wilmington. Serving on this council was a profound honor and opportunity to advocate for change, elevate voices and contribute to our community's collective progress. I am deeply, deeply grateful for the trust in me and the privilege of representing such a dynamic and resilient city. Over the past year, I've witnessed firsthand Wilmington's incredible potential. This experience has further deepened my commitment to public service and my belief in the power of leadership to affect real and lasting change. in the power of leadership to affect real and lasting change. To my colleagues on this council, thank you for your collaboration, your debate, and shared commitment to our city. To the residents of Wilmington, thank you for your feedback, trust, and unwavering belief in the possibilities of a shared future. While my time on council may be concluding, my work for Wilmington is far from over. This city has always been my home and inspiration, and I look forward to contributing to the contribution to its progress. The road ahead is filled with opportunity. Together, I know we can build a brighter future for Wilmington. Thank you, and let us all strive for the Wilmington we know that it can be. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I'd just like to start off by just thanking councilmembers Fields and White and Mills for your service to our city, for your service on our council, and like my colleague said, I look forward to continuing to work with all of you, including Councilmember Mills, who's not with us, but all of you are community advocates, and I just look forward to you still advocating for our city. Thank you for your time here. I want to thank the staff, I want to thank all of my colleagues for just helping me with my first term as council president. I know I've been a challenge, but I do thank all of you just for all of your words of wisdom and your support throughout these last four years. I want to wish everyone a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year. So we're going to have our inauguration, for those of you who are in council chambers, for those of you who are watching virtually, our inauguration will be on January 7th at the Chase Center at 8:00 p.m., that's on a Tuesday. So we are welcoming everyone down to the Chase Center Tuesday, January 7th, at 8:00 o'clock, you can also watch virtually, correct? Maybe to watch virtually, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so if you can't make it, please tune in. All council members will be inaugurated along with Mayor-elect John Carney and also City Treasurer Dwayne Sims. It's going to be an inauguration for all of council, plus the mayor and the city treasurer, so please come be a part of that. And as always, you know, if we can help you, please call us at 302-576-2140. We are officially on break, but we are still here to help and to serve, so please call us if you need anything at 302-576-2140, and I just look forward to working with the community and the community showing up and just being a part of how we make decisions in the next, for the next session. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.